The Board states for the record that this meeting is being recorded by North Cam and may be recorded by other local media. Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I welcome our guests here this evening and those watching on cable. First item on our agenda is the proclamation of North Reading Dollars for Scholars. Mrs. Manapelli, we have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to proclaim the week of March 5 through 9, 2017, to be North Reading Dollars for Scholars Week and to read the proclamation.
Second.
Second by Mr. Yule. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? You want me to read it or you want me to read it?
The proclamation, whereas North Reading Dollars for Scholars is a group of hardworking, dedicated individuals, and whereas North Reading Dollars for Scholars have devoted both time and talent to the difficult task of seeking scholarship funds for deserving students, and whereas North Reading Dollars for Scholars is planning its annual phone-a-thon for the week of March 5 through 9, 2017, where high school students will contact all North Reading homes by telephone, seeking pledges to the North Reading Dollars for Scholars Scholarship Fund. Now therefore, we, the Board of Selectmen of North Reading, do hereby proclaim the week of March 5 through 9, 2017, as North Reading Dollars for Scholars Week, and urge all citizens to open their hearts and their purses to the benefit of North Reading students who want to continue their education.
Thank you. Is there anyone here for public comment?
I'm the president.
What?
She's president.
No, no. She's president. Okay. There's none.
Does she want to say anything about the Dollars for Scholars?
Yeah, she wants to make a pitch for the Dollars for Scholars.
Please.
No, I just appreciate your support.
Come up and say it, Kate. You've got to make the pitch so people will give.
We have very high ratings here on people who watch, so you better take advantage of it.
Cable viewers now can hear you.
Hi, I'm Kathy Achivadi, and I'm the president of the Dollars for Scholars, and we do appreciate your support in our endeavor when we make the phone calls next week.
Is there any dollar amount you are looking for in particular?
Last year, we raised $23,000.
How many scholarships did you give out?
We did 12 post-grad, and we did 28 high schools.
That's great. So will you accept any donation amount?
Yes, we do.
However, small or large?
We accept donations all through the year, not just next week.
Unlimited, right?
Oh, yeah.
That's right. A blank check would be fine.
I do have a... Thank you for all you guys do, first of all. Second of all, just to make sure, because I think sometimes there's some confusion, it's for any senior student in North Reading.
Do they go to the private schools? Yes.
Yes, it can be home.
As long as they're resident in North Reading. But we also do a postgraduate, which is for anyone that's in college, that we take back their transcripts, and then we evaluate and select 10 or 12 scholarships for that also. Because they really can do it for five years almost.
Right. Because it's important for the general public to know that you don't have to just go to North Reading High School, that they can be from private school, they can be homeschooled and so on.
And most of the guidance counselors at the private schools know that.
I'm sorry?
Most of the grad...the guidance counselors at the private schools know that.
Okay, good. I want the students to know it.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to acknowledge again, as I have in years past, that, you know, my wife and I and my sons have benefited from the Dollars for Scholars campaigns in the past when the boys were going to college, and it was certainly greatly appreciated. And I would urge everybody in the community to answer the phone.
Thank you.
Open the checkbook and help out future generations of North Reading. So it's, again, greatly appreciated from years past, and give generously.
Just another example of how volunteers make the community what it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else for public comment? Yes, ma'am.
I live in Eisenhower Pond Park, and we have been trying to really just clean up some of the plans from that transaction. And in that is widening Maple Road so that it's safe. And there's one building permit that has not been issued, and I called Attorney Latham, who had representative of Mr. Sniff at that time, and asked him if we could have the house set back so that we can widen the road. And I said, if you had any questions, to contact the town administrator. So I think that was about a week ago, so I'm just here to follow up to see if that you heard from him or...our legislatures have been very helpful in, you know, getting the ball rolling so that we can sort of clean up, you know, the things that need to be done. So you look...have you heard from him?
I can check with the staff in the office. I've not spoken directly with Mr. Latham, but that doesn't mean that he hasn't contacted somebody else in the office or in the town hall. And we could update you tomorrow.
Okay, so what process should we take to...I said I would...Reading Municipal, I have been participating as well, and I had said we would kind of coordinate it just so to keep things moving.
It sounds like the next step would be for myself or the appropriate person...
Maybe to talk to the planning administrator?
I think to talk with Attorney Latham first.
And take a look at those plans.
After speaking with Attorney Latham, yes.
Okay. I did speak with the building inspector's office, and that permit has not been issued yet. And I don't know if there's a road plan or not for Juniper as well.
I'm not familiar with particular plans for Juniper. I'm aware generally of some discussions relative to Maple Road.
Okay, well, thank you. I just wanted an update.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Do you have her number?
Good evening, everyone.
Name and address.
So I am Peter Kane. I'm the NREA Vice President. I'm also the IAC Representative for the NREA. And I just wanted to chat with you guys a little bit before you made your decisions about insurance later. And real quick, I see she left, but as a teacher at North Reading, I would say I'd certainly have seen the value of Dollars for Scholars firsthand, so just thought I'd put that out there before I get going. But I'm happy for the opportunity...
Excuse me, Peter, just one second, please. If we was going to talk about health insurance?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It's a public comment.
Okay.
Public comment.
So, thanks. So consistently provided high-level health care with costs that are affordable and direct is a popular topic. Increasingly, we're asked to view health care as a right rather than as a privilege potentially, certainly more than an entitlement, certainly more than a drag on revenue. Within that vein, the town of North Reading, like all municipalities in Massachusetts, has the statutory obligation to provide a significant amount of the health insurance premiums of its employees. Regardless of law, though, I have little doubt that you, selectmen, and the town administration has no reluctance and indeed takes great pleasure in providing us with excellent health care. In so doing, you create a healthy and happy collection of employees that are able to deliver excellent services to the people of North Reading, people who are sometimes their neighbors. These healthy and happy employees contribute significantly to the perception and realities of North Reading as a town worth living in, a town with generally high property values, an expected standard of living, and a townsfolk that will contribute with a full understanding that happiness sometimes requires fiscal investment. A town within which you have chosen to live and participate. This does not seem a place that would cast the health care of its employees as anything less than a normal and natural obligation to the successful operation of a town. I am under no illusory belief that the health care premiums do not consume a large part of the town's budget. However, this is not a new trend. It is a part of the reality of doing business the way business is expected to be done. Saying it is expensive is an empirical fact and does nothing to remedy itself, nor does it make any argument any more forceful. The fact that budgetary numbers have already been tossed out to affect our sentiments does little to impact the task before us. We can fur our brows and nod our heads when the figures are presented. We can look very serious when the numbers are projected via PowerPoint by the agency hired by the town. But because the impact of health care comes as no surprise, arguments for sacrifice on the part of those shareholders most intimately involved, namely the town employees, become dulled and muted. The town administration and selectmen make financial decisions and oversee discretionary spending. To such decision-makers, the reality of budgetary constraints is just that. Within such reality, obligations are met first, and then optional choice-based expenditures are made. Insurance premiums are an obligation. The well-being of town employees is an obligation. Shifting more of the burden onto town employees is a choice. Modifying existing levels of care is a choice. Disincentivizing the use of health care is a choice. Lowering premiums but increasing out-of-pocket costs is a choice. Asking people to pay more when they are sick is a choice. None of those choices demonstrate responsibility, however, or faithfulness to the heart of the obligation. The desire to avoid the invocation of 2123 has been stated more than once, and I hope that such pledges have been genuine. Fidelity in this instance would indicate the good faith of the town towards its employees and would bolster its claim of our value. Ultimately, though, and quite simply, the town should not need to manage its budget at the expense of its promises to and well-being of existing and past town employees. We will soon determine what is best for the employees of the town through discussions later this week. It's nice to be able to participate in negotiations, certainly much nicer than having decisions made for us and our retirees via executive session. It is unfortunate that we've had to do this for consecutive years after contract negotiations, unfortunately that we get caught in the middle both here and during those salary negotiations as the different town administrative bodies use our salaries and health care to bounce around between us. But we have steps that will lead us forward. In particular, the provision for two days, allowing us until next Monday to come to some conclusions, is helpful. These are complicated numbers, and we do not need to feign expertise or immediate understanding in order to meet a manufactured timeline, nor do we need to ignore the fact that we are talking about a sizable number of people across all the departments of the town that must be happy enough to reach unanimity. Such a task should not be rushed. We look forward to a conversation that recognizes the value and the humanity of town employees. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda, minutes. February regular session, February 6.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the February 6, 2017 regular session minutes as written.
Second.
Second by Mr. Yule. Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? We also have executive sessions for the same date.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the February 6, 2017 executive session minutes as written.
I'm not sure I can second that because you talked about health care, then?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. O'Leary. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstain.
We have someone abstaining?
Yes, I'm abstaining.
Mr. Yule is abstained. Okay.
Hold on one second. Because I wasn't there, so I have to abstain, but you took the minutes, so you were actually present.
Okay, then I have the long minutes. I apologize. So I apologize for that.
So these are for February 6.
I made the motion. I made the motion.
Mr. O'Leary seconded.
I apologize.
I was just going to ask a vote again.
You took the minutes, so you were...
Mr. O'Leary. Chair votes.
Aye, two abstentions.
No, I can say aye now. I apologize for that.
I wasn't there, so I need to abstain. But you took the minutes, so...
The vote's the same, it's who did it.
Four unanimous in favor, one is abstaining.
The next item on our agenda is to vote and sign the discharge release of 270 Main Street, Unit 19. Mr. Gilbert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we provided some information that was provided by the Housing Authority, and I know Maureen is here this evening to give us an overview as to the nature of the request. I'll do my best to summarize, but if you want to come up to the podium to maybe give a better description and answer any questions, that might be helpful, Maureen. Effectively, there is a pre-existing affordability restriction to which the town was a party on two units owned by the Housing Authority in condominium complexes here in town. The Housing Authority is preparing to go forward with renovations on one of those units, which is the unit that's before us, 270 Main Street, Unit Number 19. There will be a second one, I'm told, as well, forthcoming down the road, but right now the focus is on this particular unit. There was an affordability restriction in place that dated back to the early to mid 2000s.
2002.
It's expired, as I understand it.
Yes.
It was a 10-year restriction under the program in which the unit was...was it renovated or acquired under the home program? I guess I'll turn it over to Maureen.
It was purchased. Yeah, I can...I'm Maureen Hickey, the Executive Director of the North Reading Housing Authority. Thanks for having me. We own two condo units in town. This one we're talking about, a 270 Main Street, is a one-bedroom unit. We purchased it in 2002. We used the town's home funds to make a down payment on the mortgage, and therefore it had an affordability restriction on it, and that was for 10 years. So it expired in 2012. What we're doing right now is the unit's vacant, and we want to renovate it, so we're trying to borrow some money from the bank, only $15,000, so that we can paint it, new carpets and things, and we can get it re-rented. But in order to do that, we need to discharge this home fund loan back from November 15, 2002. We have talked...I talked to Mike and Danielle McKnight about making it affordable again. I guess there's a program called the LIT program. I talked to folks at Department of Housing and Community Development as well, DHCD, and we will look into, you know, if it's possible for us to get this back on the town's subsidized housing inventory. If we can, we will. But that's, you know, first we need to get it rented and renovated, and so I'm here to ask you tonight, we need the Chairman of the Board to sign the discharge papers, and it has to be notarized.
Any questions? Maureen, Mr. O'Leary.
So the Housing Authority is going to retain ownership?
Mm-hmm.
And there's a potential that it's not affordable?
No, we always...we don't rent it...well, we don't rent it for more than the Section 8 payment standard. We keep it within the affordable rent. Usually, we do have a tenant that has a Section 8 voucher. We have in the past that lived in the unit. But as far as the town's subsidized housing inventory, which is your account from the state, from DHCD, they're not...our units aren't in that inventory anymore since this 10-year restriction expired.
Can we place another deed restriction on it, do you know? Can we look into that whereby we can voluntarily?
I don't know. We just started talking about this, so I do think there are some options that we can look into to make it, you know, affordable again. We did look into borrowing home funds again to do the renovations. We probably got about three-quarters of the way through the process and decided it really wasn't going to work out for us. And Danielle was very helpful, Danielle McKnight. So we've been in touch. She's familiar with what we have, and certainly our board is interested in making them affordable again, or as far as those numbers.
That's both of them, the other one also?
The other one, too. The other one's the same exact story. So we'll probably be before you again to discharge that loan at some point in the future as well, as we decide what to do with the program. I mean, we don't make any money on it, we just have the two units, so that's where we are. And I apologize for my board members, none of them could come tonight, which is very rare.
Everybody's busy.
Yeah. Normally, though, I would thought we would have some...
Any other questions from Maureen?
Mr. Chairman, through you, I just would note that the Housing Authority, Maureen in particular, has been very responsive to some questions that we've had, both Danielle and I. So I want to thank you for your responsiveness and sending us the information that you gave us. I also want to recognize Danielle for her efforts, but also the Office of Housing that we are partnered with Reading and some other communities on, which has helped us through this process as well.
Any other questions?
Will you come back when you're finished with the renovations to ask us for any more permissions in terms of sale?
I don't think that we need to come back and ask for any more permissions, but I could come back and give you an update. What we're going to look for, though, is to try to make it affordable again. We want to keep it, obviously. We want to keep it, we want to keep it, you know, with a low rent. We're trying not to sell them. That's why we wanted to borrow money from the bank, you know, do a little work to renovate them. But there is a possibility to use a different program that could get it back on the subsidized housing inventory without borrowing home funds again. Home funds are very heavily regulated. It really didn't seem like a good fit for us, we're a very small office.
Appreciate your efforts to keep them affordable. I think it's important.
Well, we're trying. And we only have 44 units from the state. I don't know if anyone's familiar with what else we have. We have 40 units of PBD Court for elderly and disabled. They're all one-bedroom units. And we have four family units up on Swan Pond Road, two duplexes, and we have 22 Section 8 vouchers. A little bit of everything.
And we could use a lot more.
We could use more.
Quite a bit more.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Danielle wants to take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize the Chairman to sign the discharge and release for 270 Main Street, Unit 19.
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Leary. Further discussion? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Unanimous? Thank you. When you're ready, Mrs. Manapelli, if you can entertain a motion to sign the ABCC seasonal estimate.
Mr. Chairman, I move to sign the ABCC 2017 seasonal estimate form.
Second.
Second by Mr. Yule. Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Next item on our agenda is to discuss the March special town meeting. Mr. Gilbert.
Mr. Chairman, we placed this item on the agenda to provide the Board an opportunity to have any discussion, which to have, and to provide an update relative to the planning process for the town meeting scheduled for March 13. The warrant article hearing has been submitted to the newspaper to be advertised for next Monday, March 6, at 8:00 p.m. Certainly, Selectman Prisco, who's the Board's liaison to the Community Planning Commission, can provide any further update, but the Planning Commission heard the five zoning-related articles last Tuesday evening, four of which related to the Berry property, and those four were recommended by the Planning Commission. And then there was an additional article relative to the prohibition on recreational marijuana sales, which the Planning Commission indicated that it would make a recommendation at town meeting on. Relative to the Arthur Kenny Field project, we haven't...that's the remaining article for the project, and we've spoken with the Chair of the Athletic Facility Subcommittee as well as the architect involved, and they are in the design development phase, and we expect further refined cost estimates to be presented to the Athletic Facility Subcommittee at a meeting this coming Thursday at 7:00 p.m. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Prisco, you were going to come in?
Yeah, just going to comment on the recreational marijuana warrant article. That was probably the longest discussion item that we had that evening. I got the sense that the majority of the CPC members wanted to try to get the Board of Selectmen to consider putting an 18-month moratorium on that and hold off on voting that warrant article, maybe pass over it, but let the 18 months go by to see what happens with the legislation. Particularly, the Chairman, Mr. Pierce, he felt that when we did that with the medical marijuana, things turned out pretty good for us. We learned a lot while we were under our moratorium, and he feels pretty strongly, and so do a few of their other members, feel pretty strongly that if we do the same, we take the same approach, put in an 18-month moratorium, and hold off on that warrant article, we can always try to execute that warrant article at a June town meeting or an October town meeting that is coming up. But in the meantime, he thought it would be a suggestion he'd like everyone to consider. I'll leave that up to the Chairman if he wanted to discuss it any further. I have to say it first, Kate and I, we both were there, we made it pretty clear that the Board wanted to do this, and that if they weren't prepared to do it, then the Board of Selectmen were prepared to take it away from them, and that we would sponsor the article on town meeting floor. But I've thought about it since that meeting, and, you know, I think they may have some, you know, have a good idea there for us to consider. I don't think it hurts us by executing the 18-month moratorium. And then be prepared, though, if we don't kind of like what we hear, what's coming out of the legislation, that we go ahead and execute that warrant article at the June town meeting or an October town meeting.
To be clear, just so that, and I know you mentioned this to me, but basically, the recommendation of at least what the CPC has come up with and what you're proposing this evening is we pass over the article, the zoning article on recreational marijuana...
I'm not recommending that.
...and replace it in at the June town meeting with a moratorium.
No, I'll leave it. Well, I'm sorry.
No.
The Chairman thought that should be consideration. He was speaking for himself.
Right.
He was not speaking for the entire CPC. The CPC did not make a recommendation at the other meeting. They're going to wait till town meeting. But he raised the issue of the moratorium that was in place previously as something that worked out well for the town in terms of implementing the medical marijuana bylaw, zoning bylaw. But no, he was not. I think another member did actually speak up and say he was in favor of moving it forward, too.
Well, my understanding is that one of the reasons for doing this is that we don't know exactly what the legislature's going to do, and we won't know before March 13.
Well, and I think that the point that was raised by the TA at that meeting, and that was discussed with us, is that this has kind of embedded through the Attorney General's office, who would be approving of a bylaw, and that this is, if we're intending on taking this route, that this is the route that is advised by them at this point. So implementing the bylaw and then putting it to a ballot vote is the...are the avenues that we can pursue now.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. O'Leary.
And I arrived at the Planning Commission meeting a little bit late, right after that was over. But to me, this is a little bit different than what was proposed before in relation to the medical marijuana and putting moratorium on and taking our time and doing it. To me, this is very different. You know, what we had was an initiative petition, which was passed at the November ballot, which has certain restrictions and options provided through that legislation which passed at the ballot box, not necessarily crafted through the normal course of legislation. And to me, it's very important that we take advantage of those options and opportunities on a timely basis. And in consultation again with Representative Jones and Senator Taheer even at our public meeting, they urged us to proceed in the fashion that we've proposed here, which is to put forth for consideration the basic banning of it at the October town meeting again on the May ballot. Because the legislation that was passed, the ballot question that prevailed in the November ballot, requires some tweaking by the legislature, this is the best way that we can express our intent, and I say "we" meaning the body politic here at town meeting and through the ballot box, as to what we really want to see happen in this town of North Reading. I don't see a need for a moratorium or delaying this 18 months to wait and see what happens. We can always go back and amend the zoning bylaws afterwards if we feel as though the community really wants to have recreational marijuana in the community, in the sense that I get, based on the vote at the ballot box and talking to people, it's recreational marijuana is not what people want to have in the town of North Reading. We have the opportunity, the Board saw fit unanimously to propose this. We asked the Planning Commission to sponsor because of the zoning bylaw. I think at least one member of the Commission, when they're at a meeting here, expressed an opinion of potentially postponing it. To me, I think we should stay the course, advocate for it, advocate for the change in the zoning bylaw, and it requires a two-thirds vote at town meeting, and see what happens. But based upon input from our legislators, and input from town council, in consultation with the Attorney General's office as far as the uncertainty as to how this thing is going to be adjudicated at that level. going to be adjudicated at that level, let's just do it. And we can always go back and change it later on if someone, uh, the town decides to allow for it. So, to me, I think postponing it leaves us vulnerable, uh, to something that we may not want. So, uh, again, I would urge the, uh, the planning commission, and if I were there that evening, I would have done the, I would urge them publicly, to reconsider their position of, of not recommending at this particular time or waiting till town meeting, it's pretty, pretty cut and dry, pretty straightforward. So I think we should stay the course, and I think, uh, as a board, we should, uh, recommend, uh, publicly and as often as we can before the town meeting, uh, that we're in favor of, uh, changing the zoning bylaw not to allow recreational marijuana in North Reading.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Prisco?
Yeah, I, I feel the same way somewhat, I, you know, after I left that meeting, I was kind of neutral about it, but I've been thinking a lot about it, and I just feel that the course warrant is probably the right course to take, based on what I'm hearing as well. But we were very clear to the CPC that if they weren't prepared to support the article and sponsor it on town meeting floor, that the Board of Selectmen would take that over and we would do it, so, um, I, I'm almost certain they will not make a decision until on town meeting floor. So, in that case, how does it work? Do they still sponsor it in, or do we have to take it over?
Whose name is on the ad?
They are.
AR.
That's correct, at, at the request of the Selectmen, they sponsored the article. They'll make a recommendation, the board has made a recommendation, which is in the warrant that should have arrived into your mailboxes over the weekend. They'll report a recommendation, uh, in favor or against, or potentially move to alter, which, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'm aware that there's some discussion happening here in the town hall relative to the ability to modify the proposed zoning prohibition to be a zoning moratorium. That question's not been answered yet, but that's something that, that we know the planning commission is looking at, which would mean action could take place at the March town meeting. Again, we don't have an answer.
Within the limits of the four corners.
Potentially.
Which it would be. My suggestion, if that's the case, Mr. Chairman, I would want to ensure that the main motion that is made at town meeting is to ensure that the, what's put before the public is to ban or prohibit, um, recreational marijuana in North Reading, and if the planning commission wishes to propose an amendment, let it come forward as an amendment. So I think the main motion should be, and if the planning commission is not willing to make that motion, we need to find out soon enough, the board should make the motion to prohibit recreational marijuana, and let anybody that wants to stand up, offer an amendment, to buy a moratorium.
Mrs. Manapelli?
But what we asked to be sponsored was a bylaw implementing a prohibition. Uh, moratorium, wouldn't that require a publication, uh, something independently published? And how would you be able to amend a zoning bylaw on the floor to make it so substantially different than what we asked them to sponsor?
That would be up to the moderator to determine whether or not it's within the four corners of the article for consideration.
That would be a stretch, though.
Well, substantively different, and doesn't the statute require it to be published substantively with?
I'm not disagreeing with you, but it's up to the moderator to make the determination.
He would have to do that with, uh, the advice of council.
And I, my personal opinion is, he would be stretching it to make that work. I just can't imagine you could fit it within the four corners of that article.
Well, a moratorium on a prohibition isn't a moratorium, like, like Mr. O'Leary said, a moratorium so we can, uh, designate a district and designate, you know, the terms and conditions of the bylaw, it's to, it's...
I'm not disagreeing.
I mean substantively, you're talking about two completely different things, and it's a zoning bylaw.
If it's a zoning bylaw, it's been published in the warrant. Now typically, when we read what we're proposing, it has to be ruled within the four corners of that, or it can be passed over, or it can be voted down.
But if the amendment were to...
Or it can be amended again within the four corners of the text of the...
And again, if, yeah, if the amendment were to prohibit it for a period of eighteen months, which is less than forever and a day or until they change it again, the moderator may deem it to be within the four corners. But it depends on how it's couched and how it's, uh, how it's presented.
I think we do need to make a decision then, because we, we, we can take over the sponsorship of it. If they want to propose an independent article on a moratorium, then that's something different, but maybe we need to...
No, it's too late for them to propose another article.
It doesn't sound like it from what, it doesn't sound like it from what we're talking about here.
Right.
So we might as well take over the sponsorship of it.
I, I think behind the scenes, the issue can be resolved before it gets to town meeting, hopefully, so...
All right. Who's gonna, is somebody taking the action to do that? You want me to take the action to do that?
I, I thought that it was a majority of the CPC, and I was told tonight that it wasn't.
The majority was just to make a recommendation at town meeting.
Town meeting, that's it.
It was not necessary to offer a moratorium.
If you had to, if you, if you ask me, I got the sense that the majority is not in favor of that warrant article.
Of the moratorium, is it?
Of the prohibition.
Not in favor of the warrant, that's okay.
I'm just saying, so...
I, I'm sad.
I don't know if you would go that far, but I, I feel pretty confident based on people I talked to.
I've been assessed at least two, what you're thinking of.
So, if not in favor of it, then I can make a motion to pass over it, and town meeting will vote one way or the other, and if they vote against passing it over, we go forward.
Again, I think what we did at our previous meeting when we met with the planning commission was to extend the courtesy of requesting them to sponsor an article to effectuate a change which this board sought to have happen. Uh, if they're not in support of that, then I would think that they would, uh, accommodate us and allow us to make the main motion. And I think that is what probably the administrator should convey to the planner.
We should make that act, we should take that action.
And get some acquiescence, and if that's not the case, then we, it's a race to whoever gets called first at town meeting, as to what gets, uh, proposed first. But it shouldn't have to come to that.
Right.
The, the merits of the arguments are going to be discussed either way.
Mr. Manapelli?
Mr. Roberto?
The board is asking you to do something, Jack.
I'm confused.
You asking me?
Just to get in touch with Danielle, just to communicate.
No, no, I, I heard the request, but he said Mrs. Manapelli.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, it was a good one. I'm sorry.
I, I, yeah, you confused me.
Again, I've been promoted. Yeah, yes, I was writing down the, the note to make sure that I, I caught it, exactly, and I will communicate as such to the...
I'm looking, I'm looking right here, Mrs. Manapelli, motion by in the minutes.
Yes, I will, I will communicate the message to the town planner, yes. Thank you.
Sorry. Okay, any other comments regarding the articles?
I just wanted, with regard to the marijuana, I just wanted to make sure that I was standing something. If the CPC does not recommend this, we, we can, we can recommend it ourselves, can we not, right?
Of course. We're independent bodies.
They do not have to favorably recommend it in order to have town meeting pass it, we just need two-thirds vote.
Well, what you're talking about, though, we asked them to sponsor it, and we made it clear, if you choose not to sponsor it, we will do it. But what you're mentioning now, which really an amendment wasn't discussed at the public hearing the other night, so coming to, to the, to the meeting with a, an amendment is something totally different than what we asked that they do. So if they're against it or opposed to the bylaw as it was already published and written, then they can vote not to recommend.
Or they should, they should sit silent, let a motion be made, a main motion be made by another party, this party, uh, and, uh, and then give a recommendation.
But it sounds already to us as though they're not intending on, to me, from, just from this dialogue.
Yeah.
Again, I didn't get that from the meeting, but, I mean, you know...
But we made it clear that we are, we feel that strongly about it, that we would, we would take that action, so they won't be shocked when the town administrator makes that request to the planning department, and hopefully they'll, uh, give you an answer pretty soon, so we can go ahead and take the action prior to, make sure the public knows, so it doesn't turn into any drama on town meeting floor.
Mr. Ull?
Yeah, uh, and as I recall, we gave them a charge to, to, uh, come up with, with the wording for the bylaw, I believe. Is what I'm looking here, their wording, did they put this together, or?
Council.
On the warrant?
Mr. Chairman, through you, the, the warrant article wording reflects the request of the Selectmen, uh, made to the CPC, developed in conjunction with town council.
So CPC did not put this together?
They worked with town council to put it together, yes.
Did they?
And, and I can tell you that council was here for the discussion, if I recall, and council was aware of what was requested, and when we reviewed the article with the planner, it, it achieved what the goal requested. So they have, they have sponsored the article, and it is in the, the warrant. I think the issue is whether they're prepared to recommend or not.
Okay.
And I think we, we also, we also worded it that evening when we asked them to sponsor, I mean, it was pretty well, it's pretty direct and clear.
Pretty fair.
This, this one isn't like zoning for a dispensary, and this is pretty, it's just a ban on it.
Yeah.
Right?
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion on the warrant articles?
When will we hear back, Mr. Chairman, then, on what they're intending to do?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd have to check with the planner as to their meeting schedule, um, I'm not sure if they have a meeting this week or, or next, um, but they may, they may, they may have a meeting. We'll ask them to post a meeting jointly with the board when the warrant article hearing comes up next Monday night, that's an opportunity to hear from them as well. So I, I would presume we can get some sort of an indication from them at that warrant article hearing, if not the day after. Mr. Chairman?
So you're recommending inviting them to...
I think we should, yes.
Mr. Ull?
Yes, uh, on a different warrant article, on the construction of the facilities at Arthur J. Kenny Field, I, I'd like to know, it doesn't look like, like in this, from what I'm seeing here, but I'd like to know if the committee is going to come forward with two options, one on a need basis and one on a preferred basis, as far as the facility is concerned.
Mr. O'Leary?
We, my guess is we'll come up with a proposal. I don't think there'll be an alternative necessar, I think we'll be prepared, maybe, somewhat, somewhat prepared for, for an alternative, but, uh, we're going to come up with a proposal and a recommendation, uh, which, at this particular point in time, would not include retrofitting the existing building, if that's where you're going.
Yeah, I would assume if not, yes.
I would assume that's where you're going, right.
That, that's, that's where I'm going.
So the proposal, it would be a...
On a need basis, I don't care what it is, on a need basis.
It would be a positive proposal to meet the guidelines and needs, uh, as established by what we have to do to comply with, uh, state requirements, which would not include retrofitting the existing team building.
The lower-cost approach, they'd be going to.
Correct.
And more costly.
Correct.
Okay, and preferred, okay, and that, that, that's fine. So, but you said, uh, also that, uh, you are prepared...
Well, what we have is a preliminary numbers, early preliminary numbers, that said that it would fit within the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars that the administration has recommended be utilized to come in compliance with the state regulations, which would involve retrofitting the existing facility that's currently standing there today. It's not the recommendation of the athletic facility subcommittee, not the recommendation of, uh, school administration, and the school committee has already taken a public vote and stating that they would not allow the facility to be retrofitted at this time.
They would not allow it, even if it was voted?
Because it's a school facility, it's a school facility right now. And they said they do not want it to happen, so they were unanimous in their position that they were not in favor of doing that.
So someone in the town, in the meeting, will come up with a, an alternative recommendation?
Town meeting can take a vote, but it can't happen without the approval of the school committee, much like if we, if someone came up with a proposal to, you know, put a fire station, you know, at the tail end of this building, doesn't mean that the administration here and the board have to support and spend the money to do it.
So then you're saying that if it were not approved, then they kept no bathrooms?
I don't know that. I'm just telling you what the recommendations and what they are at this particular point and where it all stands.
Steve, is, uh, is there a dollar amount set yet, or are you, are you still waiting?
Uh, yeah, still waiting for it.
And, and the dollar amount that they request, will there be options in the bid?
Yes. There'll be conditional options to expand beyond compliance with the state regulation in order to allow for a new structure to be retrofitted with a future concession stand. But it's not going to build the concession stand, or pour the foundation, the infrastructure to have it, uh, plumbed in order to meet the needs at a future date, as an add-on for the bid.
Thank you.
Any other questions regarding the bathroom article?
Just a quick one, and probably just a follow-up. So that, what you showed us in the presentation was that concrete, that concrete to build later, and the cost associated with what, what was needed there, which is the bathrooms, right? That's what we need.
Two-phase approach, right.
I was confused as to whether it was a footing or slab. There's probably not much difference.
Not much difference.
Yeah.
Yeah, not much difference, in other words, it has to go below the frost line, so the footing would be poured, uh, would be filled with a, with concrete, so it basically would be a slab, but included in the slab would be the necessary plumbing in order to allow for, uh, future expansion and tie-in for a concession stand.
Okay, any other questions regarding any of the articles on March thirteenth? Okay, with that then, the next item on our agenda is, uh, we still have ten minutes, so let's see what else we can cover. Returning to open session, signed purchase and sale agreement for Putay Homes.
Mr. Chairman?
Need executive session first for that, or?
We do, but for the public ratification, I don't expect to recommend a vote on that article, uh, or on that item, nor do I expect to recommend a vote on item number eleven, which is the ratification of the memorandum of agreement with the North Reading Library staff.
So neither one of these two. Therefore, the only thing left is town administrator's report and all the new business, so why don't we do that?
And, Mr. Chairman, through you, I mean, certainly out of courtesy to any member who may wish to report their old and new business before the executive session, if the board wanted to do old and new business first, that, that would be fine with me, in case we don't get through the TA report, which is lengthy.
Well, I'm, I'm just thinking that, you know, the town is scheduled approximately a couple of hours for our executive session, and now there's no reason to, with the exception of town administrator's report and all of the new business, to, uh, go back into regular session.
Uh, I'm not disagreeing, I'm merely suggesting that you may wish to consider old and new business first, and then town, in case we don't get the town administrator's report before eight o'clock.
I'm sorry.
Can I just comment quickly?
Mr. Prisco?
On the, um, purchase and sale, we are meeting Friday, Friday morning, so our hope by Friday.
This week?
Pulte, our, uh, sales, um, commercial sales broker, town administrator, myself, and our legal counsel, John Ick.
And the town planner.
And the town planner.
Are there any major issues, Michael, or just?
No.
Time, not really?
It's been just time, it, it's, you got a lot of people, and everybody's schedules have been a little hectic, so I think, but the progress has been very good so far, very reasonable, the comments have been flying back and forth, and now this is going to be the first time since we've done a lot of comments through electronic media back and forth, to sit across the table, and just make sure we understand some of the paragraphs need some clarification, and hopefully, at the next Board of Select meeting, we'll be in a better position to present this. And if we can get it done before then, it'll be posted, so you guys can read it in advance, but I feel very confident we're going to be prepared for March thirteenth, no problem at all.
Mr. Ull?
Thank you very much, Mike. So on Friday, you're going to sign the agreement?
No. No, we don't, we're not signing the agreement, we're just, we're going to complete the construction of the purchase and sale.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
Once we get it into that format, we'll submit it, the board of select, when you guys will see it, then we'll come here, I believe the process is, we have a quick discussion on it, we vote it, we sign it.
And then it's-
Then we-
Is it a target to have that on our agenda next Monday night?
Well, that's one of the reasons I, that was going to be the last thing I asked, is make sure that we put this on the agenda for our next meeting, and, and then, once we go, my understanding is, we sign it before we go to March 13th special town meeting. So when we go to the special town meeting, we can make sure when we present those zoning changes that they understand that we have a purchase and sale in place, so, but if we, if it gets voted down, then the purchase and sale is null and void. Town administrator may want to add some more to that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just only would add that, that this is, you know, obviously a complex transaction, a significant transaction in terms of its size, there are very productive discussions that are happening. However, if we don't believe that we resolved things to the point where there's a document that everyone is in 100% agreement on for March 6th, there's a possibility that we may be requesting a meeting between the March 6th and the March 13th, right, a town meeting for approval. And wouldn't necessarily be unusual per se, I recall having a special meeting to decide, sign the LDA for the Berry property when we bought it from D.C.A.M. You know, we'll try to avoid that, but I just ask members to keep that in mind, and we'll certainly work with the availability of members if we need to schedule such a meeting between the 6th and the 13th.
We're going to work as hard as we can to avoid that.
Anything else, Michael?
Nope.
Mr. Matt Kelly. Mr. Ewell.
I'm fine.
Mr. O'Leary.
What's that, old and new business?
Yes.
Is that the other one? Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman. Just since our last meeting, some, put it this way, how can I put it, some reality checks for me have occurred, you know, and as I reflect on a long life that individuals such as my mother enjoyed, you know, 96-plus years, just since our last meeting, some members of our community, and relatives of members of our community, you know, have passed along, and it's, you know, we have a 56-year-old mother of two boys, same age as my sons, whom I shared many, many a time along the sidelines and socially with, you know, a mother, a wife, sister, daughter, friend, you know, passed away. A 42-year-old father of a six-year-old, husband, son, brother, friend, and someone that I considered to be potential future leader for this community, again, passed away suddenly. 25-year-old young man by our community who had the pleasure of coaching in Little League, terrific young man, was the father of an eight-month-old, a son, and a friend, passed A neighbor's 71-year-old mother, you know, suffering from Alzheimer's, wife, grandmother, sister, passed away. And a 35-year-old father of a seven and a five-year-old, again, loving husband, son, brother, son-in-law, and friend, passed away. So again, as I reflected in the past couple of weeks, it happens, it's happened a few times, I guess, during my, my lifetime. It's a real reality check as to, you know, what's important, and, you know, my mother was here for 96 years, you know, in the whole scheme of things, it's a very short period of time, and we're all here for a short period of time, and all of us, in our own way, make contributions and have an impact on others and on our community. I would just, urge us to reflect a little bit more on that and keep things in perspective and, you know, as we banter about with each other and agree or disagree on different issues, you know, let's really, really keep it, keep it in check and keep what's important primly and foremost. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mike is short.
Certainly is.
I just want to mention to the board that I would like to, we're in a number crunch, but this has to be done this month, and the early, at March, the earlier the better. I'd like to schedule a midweek executive session, just to review input of the TA's contract, his contract runs out at the end of June, and I don't think there's any doubt of any of the board members in terms of wanting to set a new contract. We've got some input, we've got some, Bob Collins has provided some information on the local, and Allison had provided me earlier on communities like ours, to look at the salary structure, et cetera. So I need some input so that when I sit down and negotiate a contract, a new contract with the town administrator, that everybody's on board. So that's one thing that I'd like to get done soon, and I'll be sending out the TA review forms probably sometime next week, and with a schedule, and I'd like to see if we can kind of keep to the schedule so that we can get that done in a timely fashion, too. And that's really all I have.
It's important, absolutely.
I'll pick some, well, maybe I shouldn't say before we move on, whether any, I'm thinking like a Thursday evening, spend an hour, maybe at 7:00. And if so, can we pick a date?
I know we're in- In March, you're talking about.
Yes, you know, we're in a crunch time because, here we go, the meeting for the next two Mondays.
Mr. Chairman, would March 9th be too soon to do it?
I was thinking March 9th.
Only reason why is if we run into any more snags on the purchase and sale, that would actually be a really good date for us to meet, to sign the purchase and sale if we, if we happen to miss the 6th meeting. That falls right in line with our, that would be perfect, actually.
About at 7:00?
I won't be here for that, I'm, I'm actually going-
You're away?
No, I'm on trial for the next, that, that following day and the following week, so.
So the 9th, you can't make it, or is it too early?
Yeah, and we already meet it on the 6th, right?
Yeah.
That week?
Mr. Maser is just looking over a few hours, a lot of time to focus on the town administrator.
And what Michael is saying, if we can't get-
But we're also on the 13th as the town meeting as well.
Yeah.
Right.
So I'm out, I'm kind of out straight myself for those, other than what we've already dedicated to, to, you know, so maybe you should, can meet without me and I'll give you, I can offline.
How far with the information I've collected prior to the meeting?
Okay, I mean-
Well, on the purchase and sale, we'd have to just make sure you have an opportunity to-
Well, the 9th for the purchase and sale is only contingency in case-
I feel confident we'll have it for the 6th, but if, you know, we don't-
Well, we thought we were going to have it tonight, too, so you never know what's going to come up prior, and it's not like a five-page document.
No, the week's just going too fast, that's the problem.
So can we tentatively schedule a meeting for 7:00? It'll be a regular session followed by an executive session, just in case we need the regular session.
It's March 9th.
Short of any, where did Michael go?
He stepped out.
He stepped out because we were talking about the, Mike?
Come on down.
I'm just trying to set a schedule, Michael, you didn't have to leave. We're going to, we're scheduling a meeting for the 9th at 7:00, and we'll start with a regular session if we need it, as it relates to the Berry property. In case it doesn't get done on the 6th. And that'll be at 7:00 p.m., hopefully.
I'm not immediately aware of any conflict for a meeting for that evening taking place. I know the Board of Appeals would be the most likely board to be meeting, but they are meeting the Thursday before on the 2nd.
Do they meet here?
They generally meet in this room, but they're not-
Meet in another room?
If that were the case, we would use another room, that's correct. But I expect we'll be able to find a meeting room if this room is not available for some reason.
All right, that's all I have, and it's 8:00. Couple minutes after, next item on our agenda is vote to sell town-owned land, map 17 parcel one.
I believe there's a hearing notice.
My understanding is we need to agree to set a price for this transaction.
That's correct, yes. So first, maybe a desire to read the hearing notice, which it was provided.
Do you have it here? No? It's in the packet, I think.
It is. The Board of Selectmen shall be considering for sale the following parcel of town-owned land on Monday, February 27, 2017, at 8:00 p.m. in room 14 of the town hall, 235 North Street, North Reading, Massachusetts. Any parties interested in the potential sale and subsequent private ownership of this parcel should plan on attending. It's map 17 parcel one, square footage 3,963 square feet, location Eight Acres Boulevard. Lot information, the overlay district, there is none, it's not in the aquifer protection district. Frontage not applicable, frontage amount none, not within 100 feet of wetlands, no environmentally sensitive area, not, excepted street is not applicable, it's not a buildable lot, it's not buildable because there's not enough square footage, it's residency zoning. I, I think I went into a different page.
No, that's great.
Is that it?
So, Mr. Chairman, through you.
Mm-hmm.
We've noticed this as a, as a public hearing as required under the town's bylaws, and Mr. Cogan is here, he's the petitioner, going back some period of time. We've complied with the bylaw and the board's policy with regard to requesting comments from boards and commissions relative to the property, and provided an appropriate window for response. Again, also publicly noticing this hearing, and effectively it appears that there's no identified municipal use for this parcel of land, which abuts Mr. Cogan's property, and the board is in a position, based on the advice of Attorney Coppola, to sell the property to Mr. Cogan, should it so desire. For informational purposes, we provided a copy of the assessor's card, which shows evaluation of the property and the address, as well as an image that shows the location of the property, which I can pull up on the screen here for those who might be watching in the audience. And we basically went on the board's previous use of a motion that allows the board to elect certain criteria for the conveyance, including any restrictions and setting the price for the property, so that the board would be able to make an informed decision. We spoke with Attorney Coppola, who informed us that his fees to sell the land would be in the approximate range of $1,000 to $1,500. Property is assessed at $39,900 and has frontage on a paper street, to my knowledge has not been constructed, and again, abuts Mr. Cogan's property. And we have not received any additional inquiry relative to the property from any other property owner.
And that description in map, which we've reviewed in the past, is in the packet.
I, I just want to make sure I'm looking, Mr. Chairman, I want to make sure I'm looking at the correct, correct map here.
It's lot one, it's the-
I see that here, I just want to make sure this is the right one, off of Wadsworth Road, or, yeah, off of Wadsworth Road? Is that the one? I see a number one, then I see-
Through you, through you, Mr. Chairman, the property actually has an address on Acres Boulevard, as I understand it, which is the so-called paper street. We've put up a map on the television and on the, the projection that shows the parcel, the parcel in yellow is the town-owned land that's, that's in question this evening, and the parcel covered, outlined in orange is Mr. Cogan's property. And I won't speak for him, he certainly can request to speak to the board if he'd like, but I believe he's indicated that he does not intend to create a buildable lot, however, he is considering the construction of an accessory structure such as a garage or a shed, if I recall from his comments correctly.
Yes.
Dante has a question, Bob.
Yes, Kate.
I just have a quick, maybe we can scroll, but it's, the value of the land is $39,900, even though it's non-buildable and vacant lot?
I think we're looking at a formulaic value based on the square footage and the fact that it's not buildable, but does have some limited frontage on a street that has not been constructed. My understanding is that the board has historically not utilized that as a value when setting the value to convey.
Okay.
We had a, we, meaning the board, had a previous policy a few years back that required us, as a matter of policy, to advertise for a minimum bid of the assessed value, which didn't make an awful lot of sense at all, and a lot of, a lot of these small, non-buildable lots, because as the town administrator indicated, there's some sort of a, a formula that's utilized by the assessors, and appropriately so, to place the value on them, but the true value is really only to the director butler, it's non-buildable, the board has been very careful in ensuring that, that they be conjoined with the parcel next to it, and that it doesn't create another buildable lot. And for those that are buildable, we'd get more money for it. And this is just, again, in keeping with our practice and policy of trying to get stuff back on the, back on the tax rolls, encouraging people to do it. So a few years back, the board amended their policy and basically, cases such as this, looking to just cover the costs of conveyance that the town would expend in order to get into a new owner.
And we're talking about just under 4,000 square feet?
Yeah, and to echo something I think that Steve was saying, is that we've, we've been working on this now, at least since my first term, some years ago, so-
Since 1988, yeah.
What?
Since 1988.
Well, no, but I mean, no, 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 no.
So you-
No, 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 we made the change.
Years ago, yeah.
Yeah, we made the change during that time-
Right.
To, to be more practical in what we were trying to accomplish.
Correct.
Okay, so I recall that. I, I do have a question, so it's parcel one, what's the story with parcel 77? It looks like there's a structure on there.
Someone else's land.
Is that somebody else's land?
Another house.
Mr. Cogan probably knows it better than I do, but I believe that's a separate house lot with frontage on Wadsworth.
Yeah.
And I believe he, he talked about parceling off a portion of his property and selling it to his neighbor.
Yes.
So basically making his a rectangle.
Oh, I see, that's right, we call it that, yeah.
And swapping it off, basically, covering his costs.
And, and, Mr. Chairman, through you, in the interest of full disclosure, I believe Mr. Cogan has previously appeared before the board and been presented an opportunity for this property, and for whatever reason, the time, timing wasn't right, but now I believe the timing is right, as I understand it.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Bob, Mr. Frisco.
So going back to, you know, a few years ago when we've done this the last, we would typically require the sale price to be, to cover all our costs, my understanding, right? Legal, any closing costs, et cetera, and then put on some terms and conditions, and do we have those terms and conditions? Everybody has them in front of them?
There are five that we've-
Right, and typically we've chosen the term and condition that does restrict you from any ability to subdivide the property in the future. So I just want to make sure that you are clear on that, you're comfortable with that.
That's why I asked.
Yes.
Yes, I mean, I understand that, and, but that's why when I had written a letter to the town administrator, I was expressing it would be in my interest in sort of, sort of cost sharing, and I don't really have any use for the property behind 77. I haven't agreed to sell the land- I haven't agreed to sell the land or anything like that, but I just wanted to have the ability to say, look, if I'm gonna purchase from the town approximately 4,000 square feet, right behind his house, if you see, it's about the same piece in size. I would like to end up with a more conforming shaped lot, and I don't necessarily need the property behind my neighbor's house. It's not like I'm going to, and that house as well has a long history of just sort of being built on a very small lot, and...
Yeah.
That home is basically right-built, right on the lot line, so it's, it's already useless land for myself, so...
Okay.
I just ask for the ability to say, hey, if I can subdivide that piece off, sort of, in equal square footage, for an equal square footage, it could work for me.
Mr. Gilbert, do you have a recommendation? Are you recommending a sales price based on...
Bob, Kate, that's my question.
I don't know if, well, I don't, I don't know if anyone remembers, but what did we sell Magnolia for? We did the, we rolled the cost in and everything, but we came up with a nominal sum, right?
We purchased that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that one there, we had a purchase price on, so we had to, we covered our costs for the purchase price, I think it was like 11, wasn't it?
11.
It was a different situation.
It was a little different situation. This we probably got from tax title somewhere 40-plus years ago or more. That one there, we actually acquired through eminent domain.
Oh, so we were trying to get our money back, okay.
Eisenhower Park Parkers, where we acquired that, had a, had a fixed cost associated with it.
Okay, all right.
So basically, what we're doing is covering our costs and getting it back on the tax roll.
Okay.
Mr. Gilbert, do you have a recommendation on the...
With regard to the cost?
Yes.
So we've been, been provided an estimate with a range between $1,000 and $1,500. I would suggest that it be approved at an amount not to exceed $1,500. And that would be, that would effectively recover the anticipated costs for the conveyance, if that's the board's desire.
You said that was the quote for the fee, though, for the council's fee? Is that recording costs, everything is included in that?
That's my understanding, yes, as provided by Attorney Coppola.
That's how we usually do it. That's how we've done it.
But if you're saying, oh, I see, okay, all right. Okay, can I make a motion?
For the record, if it, if it helps, we provided a copy of the previous meeting minutes from 2011, in which the restrictions that were voted were that the property could not be used in and of itself as a separate building lot, and that no building or structure of any kind shall be erected or maintained on the premises unless the premises is combined with adjoining, adjoining and said adjoining land already meets the minimum requirements for the town of North Reading for a separate building lot. So again, I'm just reporting the previous restrictions that we voted, I don't know that the board wishes to follow with those same restrictions.
What was that?
I have those in this motion.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think what that would do.
And you seem to have done it for each of them, I'm not...
Right.
Typically, we've gone with number three option, on all the ones that I've been involved in.
But this is not, this isn't, we're not actually saying we're gonna sell it to Mr. Cogan, we're just saying that's the minimum fixed auction, and so who's doing the auction? The attorney?
This is my understanding of how it's been conducted in the past, yes.
Yeah, well, it has to go to public auction. Who else would have interest, other than generally a director butler, someone who might want to park us both there, but it might not be in the town's best interest to have someone park there both there. Generally, we sell it to whatever would be in the best public interest, which would allow for, you know, expansion of septic systems and to a director butler, straighten out the other lot over here, and that's what the wishes are, the stated intent, but it still has to go to public auction.
Okay.
And there's a minimum sale price?
Minimum bid.
Is that what I said?
The minimum would be $1,500, or if the board wished to set it lower than that, it could.
What's the minimum?
Could set it at $1,000, $1,200, I mean, it's the decision of the board. We've been provided a range, it will depend upon the nuances of the review and the closing, but we don't have a fixed cost, so I mean if... Jeff has a question.
Jeff, go ahead, I'm sorry.
When this property becomes part of 76, I guess that's what it's going to be, he cannot build on it, build any structure on that? Would that include a garage or something like that?
If the board were to convey it without any restrictions, he could potentially build on it, so the board needs to determine...
But we have restrictions, though.
It says, it says, if his, his house already, that's already on the parcel, meets the minimum requirements, which...
If he joins it with that land, then he can go ahead and build in that area...
Right.
As long as he meets the setbacks and so forth.
Yeah, so...
Okay, thank you.
But independently, you can't build a house on number 1, you can't build a garage or a, you know, structure on it. But if his land already is, and he has a house already there, you know, in a pretty sizable parcel, well, in comparison to 1 and 77, so... So do we have to vote then on the minimum bid amount, or should we, or should I just make a motion?
Yes and yes.
My understanding is the board has historically set the minimum bid number and put the restrictions on the auction.
Okay, so do you mind making a motion?
Let's hear your motion.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move to sell by auction town-owned land designated as MAP 17 parcel 1, located at 8 Acres Boulevard, in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 60, Section 77B, at a minimum bid price of $1,500. Buyer, successful bidder, to pay all fees, costs, and expenses associated with this conveyance, subject to the following restrictions. One, not to be used in and of itself as a separate building lot. Two, the premises...
Right, no, wait.
The premises shall not be used to satisfy minimum zoning or health code requirements for the construction on or use of any building on adjoining land. Three, no building or other structure of any kind shall be erected or maintained on the premises unless the premises is combined with adjoining and said adjoining land already meets the minimum requirements of the town of North Reading for a separate building lot. Four, no building or other structure of any kind shall be erected or maintained on the premises. Five, to waive the provisions of Mass. General Law's Chapter 48, Section 6, pursuant to its ninth paragraph.
Generally, we, it's a menu, and you, it's à la carte.
We don't necessarily have to do all, we can pick.
Oh, I'm sorry, oh, that's why you, that's why you...
Just go to number 3.
Go to number 3.
Number 3 or number 1?
I'm sorry.
We've done both, we've done both.
I both just scratched 1 and 2.
1 and 3.
I was, it seemed like it was separating it out in parcels, and that's why I, all right, 1 and 2.
Read number 1.
Okay, I'm sorry.
1 and 3.
I withdraw my motion.
No, no, we're mending it.
I'm sorry, let's strike number, I'm sorry, strike number 2, 4, and 5. I meant to read just number 1 and 3.
I second the motion.
Seconded by Mr. Priskin.
Sorry about that.
Further discussion on the motion. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Excuse me, did we set a price?
Yes.
1500. That was in the motion.
I just struck...
I just wrote him a 1,500.
I just struck 1 and 3.
Good luck.
Okay.
I don't know where I am now. Town administrator will help you out.
Oh, my goodness.
You're in good shape.
Sorry, sorry.
You got a good deal, that's what you got.
Jeff, you can excuse yourself.
Are we not gonna have any discussion of anything?
That was, that was...
I don't believe so.
Mr. Chairman, we are.
We are?
We are, yes, we'll do that first.
I should do that first.
And which is what?
Collective bargaining? General collective bargaining, not related to health insurance and land transaction, very briefly, relative to full day homes. It will be brief, but...
All right, so we're gonna do that first.
I would suggest that we do that first.
That's so funny. Too long in the day, I'm not processing, you know.
Thank you.
Okay, Phil, we will be entering into executive session, so we're gonna close our regular meeting, and we will not be coming back, okay, so...
So you got an early night.
You got an early night, we'll, we'll give you five minutes to wrap it up.